Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council, July 19, 2016. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. It is moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of July the 19th, 2016, as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Undeclared? Acceptance of the minutes? It is moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Barker that council accepts the minutes of the following meetings: The meeting of the Library Board, held April 21st, 2016; the regular meeting of council, held June 21st, 2016; the meeting to open tenders for the sale of surplus equipment, held July 7th, 2016; and the meeting to open tenders for the land clay fill capping, held July the 8th, 2016. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, you're going to start with the Joint Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, we have sent letters to the members of the Joint Health and Safety Committee commending them on the vital role that they are playing in our corporation in preventing work-related injuries and diseases, and that they're an important part of resolving occupational health and safety issues in the workplace. Their strong presence in our organization and the work that they're doing really has a reciprocal effect on workplace safety and the number of incidents that we're experiencing. So, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the committee. And we have a coordinator is John Fredericks, our fire chief. The hockey heritage rep Drew Enoy. Fire is Danny Sassfield. From the library, Wanda LaChapelle. For the museum, Caitlin Mackay. From the police and bylaw, we have Steve Lavreck and Craig Teatke. Physical services, Steve Ranta and James Doyle. From recreation, Amy Clark. From Tech Pioneer Residence, Jody Semple and Dan Thomas. From town hall, Peter Georgoff. From daycare, Candace Renaud. So, we encourage them to carry on the valuable work that they do in keeping our workplace safe and thank them for their ongoing service.
For sure. Thank you very much, Nancy. And the next topic is Aqua donation.
I'd just like to share with council that we have received information from Aqua. We don't have the official letter yet, that they have sold some surplus equipment and they would like in turn to donate the proceeds from the sale of that equipment to the Town of Kirkland Lake to aid in our beautification and landscaping. They know that we've had to sort of trim our budget in terms of Civic and out at Heritage North in our discussions with them. So, they've earmarked $27,000 donation to the Town of Kirkland Lake so that we can finish those landscaping areas. One of the things we would like to do with a portion of the money is to put a gazebo outside on the new lawn where the grass is growing, where Wolf grew grass, at Hockey, sorry, at Heritage North, to enhance our wedding rentals. Lots of people would like to have it outdoors and that. And we had our own staff build similar to what we have at the trailhead at Kinross Pond, only something on a smaller scale and colored white to put out in that lawn. And that's part of what we would like to use some of that funding for. And the rest over at Civic where we've had to trim the budget on landscaping and that. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. See if you had any objections or suggestions or comments.
Certainly, that's very generous of Aqua to do that donation. And money should certainly be well spent. I do have a, if there isn't any questions or any other suggestions, I do have a resolution I can read. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie. That council approves the addition of $27,000 to the 2016 capital budget for landscaping at Heritage North and Civic Park. This amount is to be drawn down from a donation from Aqua. All in favor? Thank you.
Our next item is the second quarter financials, our operations and capital. And I want to thank Jen, our treasurer, and the managers for the excellent job that they do in monitoring and keeping our budget online. Overall, I'll tell you, it looks very good. We're under budget in all areas by about $715,000. However, you know, lots of work isn't done yet. And I'd like to go through that very quickly with you and then have questions on each area. Okay, so, starting with admin, the only change there in the admin is that all yearly lease revenue gets billed out in January. So, whatever we've gotten in revenue is already there for the year. The Treasury Department, we have not yet posted our audit expenses. Our tax certificates are on target. And we may need to consider setting a tax sale excess away to reserve fund or to working capital. And we can discuss that at a later date. Under fire, the wages and benefits are over budget at about $40,000. This is stat time that was paid out. Under police, we are behind one OPP payment. So, it looks a little better than it actually is. We have received all our funding that we intend to receive from them. The $32,000 is in there already. Our parking ticket revenue is down a little bit. And I think people are getting used to not parking when they're not supposed to. So. Animal control, a good job our new person is doing with animal control. We have decreased euthanization. She's more into finding homes for pets and that. And it used to cost us quite a bit in euthanizing pets. And we're not doing that anymore as much. Economic development, tourism. Consultants are under budget, $12,500. That's still ongoing. We haven't completed all the consulting for this year. We did not transfer funds for Centennial into the reserve fund yet. That won't go into year end. So, that's still sitting in there. A little bit of the strategic plan money has been spent. And that rest will be spent over the rest of the year. And no consultant money yet spent in tourism. There's $31,000 in there. So, that's what accounts for the under budget in economic development. Under MIS, we've changed the method of recording employee computer purchase program. And that's left a little bit of a surplus in that account. The museum, we have not yet received our culture and citizenship grant. We don't usually get them until the latter part of the year. So, that's not in there. However, I can tell you the wages and benefits are under about $20,000 in that area due to some decreased hours. At Tech Pioneer Residence, the revenue increased. We did get the little increase from the ministry of $21,800. Dietary aid part-time wages are under budget by about $15,000. Laundry aid distributed wages are under budget, $5,900. The KDH electricity and heating, we still have one billing coming from them that is not in there yet. And it's about $16,000. Our annual service agreements are paid until June. But nursing admin is over budget by $10,000. And that's due to people taking their vacation, all used up and no more for the rest of the year. So. Under recreation and cultural services, our daycare, our subsidized children is declining, the number of children that we have subsidized. So, we're seeing lower revenues in that area. All our QA funding has been received from D-SAV and Applied, $9,300. All our early learning program funding has been received, $27,900, and has been applied to that one as well. Under recreation, our fitness revenues are down a little, about $5,900 so far. The ice surface revenues are down about $8,000. Our pool donations have been moved out of their into reserve, about $7,500. And we are over the $100,000 mark for pool donations. Under library, our culture and citizen grant has, will be received sort of again closer to year end, much like the museum. Part-time wages there are under budget. But the summer students have just started. And that constitutes most of their part-time wages there. Under physical services, under the cemetery, their wages and benefits are $10,000 under budget. However, the summer seasonal workers have just started. So, that should even out. Airport, consultants under budget at the airport, about $7,000. However, our annual compliance audit has not been paid for. And the summer maintenance is under budget. But we're still in process with that. The planning and building, we've not done the journal entry yet for the building demolition fund transfer. That doesn't happen until the end of the year. And that's $24,000. Plumbing permit revenue is down about $8,400. However, the summer construction season has just started. So, we expect that to come up again. Our planning wages benefits are $20,000 under. But we've had somebody on that leave. And they're returning. So, that should come back up again. Legal costs for official plan defense is under budget by about 10. However, the final bills are just coming in. That, fighting that legal cost over official plan has cost about $50,000 to $60,000. Under residential development, we don't really have anything yet. That's just kind of going on right now. Engineering, our consultants are under budget. However, that's not complete yet. Part-time wages are under budget. However, those are student wages. And we didn't hire a seasonal there this year. We had a qualified student, engineering student. And that's who's working in that area. Our streetlight maintenance is over budget, $7,000. We did have some wiring issues, nothing to do with the LED. But our wiring and our plug-ins and that we have for our Christmas lights and that, we had to do some repairs there. I'm just about done. Our roads, culvert maintenance, $21,000 under budget. But we have not started the summer program yet. The grading, ditching, cleaning, storm sewers, $14,600 under budget. Again, have not started the summer program. Patching, surface treatment, we're $25,000 under budget. Again, just starting that summer program now. Line painting, come up $15,000 under budget. Mark was able to source some, another company to do some of the line painting and do much of it ourselves. And ended up being $15,000 under. Road signs, $9,000 under budget. Traffic signal maintenance, $5,500 under budget. Sidewalk replacement, $11,000 under budget. But we expect to do some more of that over the summer. And that will probably get used up. Snow haul, sanding and salting was $6,000 over budget earlier in the year. And so far, the OT under the roads has been $112,000 in OP. Waste management, we have our blue box recycling, under budget, $63,000. Change of contract on plants since we passed that budget. And the C of savings is $63,000. We've not started our loan payments on the waste receptacles as of yet. Because we haven't received them as of yet. So, that's, looks like it's under budget. And we're not, we've not incurred the landfill capping costs or reserve transfers yet. That's going to be, the $47,000 under budget does happen with a transfer to gavel. Sanitation. Service repairs, $14,700 under budget. The taxes have not yet been posted for the plants. It looks like it's $33,000 under budget. We're required by the municipal act to pay taxes on our sewage water treatment plants. And it's kind of money in, money out. So, when we charge those taxes out, that will, that will come up again. The hydro at the new wastewater treatment plant right now is $23,000 over budget after half a year. But we're still working on that. We're still working on efficiencies and that to bring that down. Repairs and maintenance and parts at Swastika plant, $10,000 under budget so far. Our regional agencies and that, not all billed out yet. This is always a little bit different because the first, the first billings, they pay the same as what they paid last year. And then, in the latter part of the year comes what their new, their new amounts are that they're charging us for this year. So, we should be all right there. Under our operating revenues, our taxes have been levied. Our tax write-offs are less so far than we expect. And our payments in lieu don't usually come in until July or August. And so, that will be, will be coming. Our OMPF comes in quarters. And our land sales is still down. However, we still have lease payments coming in. And we still have some land sales that are in the works. Provincial offenses, we're pretty close with that in that we've budgeted for this time of year, we'd be at $79,900. And we're at $75,000. So, that budget overall is in pretty good shape, I would say. Just moving down to the waterworks budget, it remains at $15,000 under budget. You, what you will see there under, if you look at Gull Lake Pumping Station, McTavish and Meters, that's a wage distribution thing. It comes out, it comes out right in the end. It's just when we move the wages around that you have to consider all those three together. And also, we have moved $50,000 of the reserve fund transfer has gone. We budgeted to do 100. So, that's my report of the second quarter finances. Are there questions?
The only question I had, Nancy, was the Gull Lake Pumping Station. You sort of lost me on that one. I'm sorry. We're over $41,000?
The wages get distributed between Gull Lake Pumping, McTavish Lake, and the Meters. And those wages get moved around. So, although one looks like it's over in those, if you look at the others, they'll, they'll come under. And once we distribute all those wages around, it, it should come out right in the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Questions?
The next item was a proposed code of conduct. And our committee who worked on that was Joanne, Norm, and Tom. So, maybe I'll get Joanne to start it off and then get them.
So, back in April, council did set up our ad hoc committee to create a code of conduct for you to look at. The purpose of this is to establish standards for members of council, boards, and committee members. And this is because we expect the municipal act to be amended. So, that this is part of what is expected of us. So, the code of conduct that we have passed around to you, we gave it to you last week to look at, will ensure that council has a common basis of acceptable conduct. And the things that we addressed in this document are things like the use of confidential information, the respect for council's decision-making process, media relations, conflict of interest, conduct at meetings, and interpersonal behavior between members. It also sets up a complaint process, which will involve an integrity commissioner. So, it would require appointing an integrity commissioner, which we believe is also going to be another change that the municipal act does bring in, that we do have to have one appointed. So, this commissioner, the integrity commissioner, he will receive a complaint. And his role will then be to investigate it and to bring a report back to council as to what his findings, his or her findings are. So, he would also provide an annual report to council on what his goings-on were for the year. So, there's two things that we're bringing to you today. And one is the code of conduct and whether or not you'd like to accept it as it is or if you want to amend it. And the other thing we're asking for is, the, the next step is to appoint a commission, an integrity commissioner. So, whether or not we bring a list of people who have come forth and said they'd like to take this position, or would you rather that we put it out for proposal? Different municipalities have done different things. Some have put a request. Some have just appointed. And some have done job posting. So, we're asking you how you would like us to proceed with this. I leave it to Counselors Mino and Counselors Barker if there's something they'd like to add about this process.
I would like to commend Joanne for all her hard work and putting everything together. She's gone out, done her research, compiled it. And we reviewed it as a committee and came up with this package. Looks very good. Any, any recommendations or anything put in that package that has reference to either the municipal act, other legislation? So, it is governed. And it's just, but it's made available for counselors and for the public to understand what's being asked of the counselors from this code of conduct. So, everyone's on the same page. So, council, have any questions or comments?
Yes, I see a lot of hard work went into this. Just a couple of comments. C2, foster respect for decision-making process. All members of council shall accurately and adequately communicate the attitudes and decisions of the council, even if they disagree with council's decision, such that they respect the decision-making process of council is fostered. It's kind of a vague statement, I find. Does that mean council shouldn't ever question a decision that's made in council, in public, to the press? Or, I'm not sure where we're coming from that. I understand we don't want to be taking potshots, personal remarks to other council members or staff. So, I'd just like some clarification on that one.
My understanding of this is that when you sit around the table and debate, you all have your opinions. And you will vote however you would like to vote. But in the end, you have the majority rules. And when you go out to the public, you still have to, even though you voted against it, this was what the majority of council had agreed to. Now, what I can do is I can do some more research and come up with different wordings for this and bring back other suggestions, if you like.
Well, I think as a council member, they have that right to express their opinion. We, yes, it got passed. Maybe I don't agree with it. But it should be done in a professional manner, I agree. And without any personal comments about any council member or staff member. That's how I would take it.
Yes.
That's how I would like to see it, put it that way.
Would you like me to get some different wordings for it?
Or some clarification?
Other municipalities have written out and bring you back a selection of what they say. And we can make it work for us.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tom.
To further comment on that, in the municipal act, I believe that we are, as counselors, that there is a clause in there, from our perspective, that we're not too, similar wording. So, I think that's kind of where it stemmed from, was the municipal act. So, there is some guidance there that we can elaborate on.
One other, well, C3, release of information to public and the media. There's something I would like to see in there because it's occurred on a few occasions. And I'm relating to media releases. When there is a media release, it's kind of hit and miss that council sometimes receives it after the fact, as opposed to receiving it beforehand. And because when you hear a media release, somebody comes up to you on the street and you don't know anything about it. And it's happened a few times. So, I would like to have something added to that, that media releases would be sent out in advance of, to the media, in advance of the media release.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just eliminates any confusion. And we're all on the same page. Thank you.
Counselor Roman?
I think this is a well-done package. It's stuff that I've kind of picked up working for the town and then now on council. But it's nice to see it all together in one, in one place. And I think coming on as a new counselor and going forward, it would be nice. It will be nice to see, you know, this handed to, to anybody new coming in. I've just got a couple of points. The first one is in C5, engaging in incompatible activity. And it's specifically Part A that says, members of council shall, or sorry, not Part A, Part B, members of council shall not act as an agent on behalf of another party before council or any committee, board, or commission of council. I came forward as, as a union president for the post office. And to me, it sort of contradicts this. Now, I didn't see anything wrong with me doing that. And I'm not sure if it's something that shouldn't have occurred. Or, or am I misinterpreting this clause here?
We didn't have a code of conduct at that time when you came forward, right? So, you didn't break anything for sure.
I think the fact that you did declare a conflict of interest and you left the table, you are not, you are not sitting here as a member of council when you did that petition. Nor were you sitting at the table when the decision was made to go through with that resolution.
Okay. So, in the future, even, it wouldn't contradict this then?
No.
Okay. And then, the other comment I have, it has to do with the integrity commissioner? And just my opinion, is it going to be paid, even though it'll just be sort of an on-call thing? Will the person be paid?
I imagine so. And that's something that we're going to have to figure out. I don't think that we'll get somebody without paying them. We do have something similar with the audit compliance committee. And they're on an on-call basis to, in which we pay them an hourly wage if they're needed.
Okay. Well, I'd be of the opinion that if they are going to be paid, I think we should be opening it up to, to everybody, accepting applications and taking it from there. But all in all, you know, I'm impressed with this package. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Counselor Mino?
know what the intent is. I think we're in agreement. I guess a little concerned that it's not taken as a gag order, that council cannot make comments after a decision has been made. I mean, any counselor should have the right to say, yes, we voted on it. I'm not in agreement with it. I don't see anything wrong with that. Yeah. But this kind of, my first interpretation of it was that that's not really allowed. So, I was a little concerned about the wording.
Your opinion is never muzzled. This speaks to the decision process itself. So, it's after the decision's made. But...
Yeah.
You know, all in all, it was a great paper. Again, I too want to thank Joanne and Norm and Tom for the hard work coming up with this. And I guess what we're, what we-
And I guess what we're, what we've talked about today is we are going to look at, at C, at C two, and we are going to make the integrity officer, you have another? Okay. Okay, it was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council approves the code of conduct, council boards and committees elaborating on section C two. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves the appointment of an integrity officer, and that staff bring forward a list of qualified individuals for council to consider after advertising the position. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, item two is director of physical services, Mark. You're going to come up and talk about the clay capping contract at the landfill site.
My first report is on the clay capping landfill site. We did tender out for that work. We received one tender on it. There was several tenders taken and picked up from the town, but only one bid. Alex McIntyre's been awarded this work on three different occasions since we began capping, closing off, finishing off the cells that were closed back in 2008, 2013, 2014. They're very aware of the scope of work and have done a good job. Have no issues with them being able to complete the work that we need. Along with this is the clay we receive, or we get the contractor to haul in is through Canadian Malartic on their site just across the road, so it's a short haul. Works good for us. They don't charge us for any of the material, and we've made that agreement with them, a three-year agreement in the past, and we've negotiated a further agreement with them to continue accessing the clay as we continue to cap and close off ourselves. So, within this report, there'll be a bylaw later to accept the amended agreement for the clay. It allows us another forty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven cubic meters of material that we can access for our needs. The budgeted amount, we were looking at coming in at about eighty-seven thousand. We're a bit over with it, although the price isn't far off of what it was before. There is three thousand additional under contract construction within the operating budget, so it's able to meet the, the budget for this year to continue on our capping. Sorry. Again, the capping of the closed cells is a requirement by the Ministry of the Environment and our, under our certificate of approval. With Ministry of Environment, as we were behind in capping, we negotiated kind of a seven-year plan. We're a bit ahead of schedule, and we're fully in full compliance with our capping activities now. So, continuation on will keep us in compliance and make sure that the landfill gets closed off properly in time. We have reserves for capping, and then there's the long-term closure costs that we're preparing for after the site is closed. We have to maintain it for several years, and there's ongoing costs with that after. So, that's all been looked after with, in budgeting for the landfill closure liabilities.
Any questions? No questions?
Okay, and as Mark said, that will be coming back as a bylaw.
Sure.
Next item is the AMO request for a letter of support to Waste Diversion Ontario.
So, the town received the, a letter from AMO requesting support for their activities. With the Waste Diversion Ontario, the AMO's been able to help municipalities in getting our needs represented. With the Bill 151 coming in, we feel it's, I believe council should support their request because they really work for the municipalities. There are advocates, and with them, there's been some, a lot of changes with the WDO and the Stewarts, and it's, having them as the driving force and helping us is to the other municipalities' benefit. So, I'd recommend that. In the past, they've helped with our transfer payments for the Blue Blocks recycling from them, and the Stewarts had argued against it, maybe go to arbitrated decisions, which brought our funding back up after the arbitration, but because it was a single-year decision, they forced, the Stewarts forced us back into arbitration again. We reduced funding, and now we're, we're back up to where we were. You'll see a letter, information to council from the Stewarts Ontario for a quarter. So, now with their help, we're back up into the sixty thousand range, and we're also meeting our best practices and that, almost to the, like, they fund up to fifty percent and we're forty, I think, whatever, forty-seven, whatnot, in there. So, we're doing everything as far as best practices to maximize our funding with them as well.
Okay, I do have a resolution for that.
Yeah.
It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council submit a letter of support for AMO regarding securing and increasing funding allocations from Waste Diversion Ontario for the Blue Box transition work. All in favor? Thank you.
The next report is with regards to residential curbside recycling collection. I'm recommending that we extend the contract with TNR. The extension-related costs of materials and market fall within our budgeted amount for this year. Again, over the past few months, everybody is aware, we've been reviewing different options, how to best manage this in light of Bill 151, and looking at contracted services versus town-run services and the capital investments involved with town-run services, not knowing where the Stewarts and WDO are going to go with everything with Bill 151. So, was a direction to coun, from council for me to look at the best, most economical way to proceed in the short term. So, you'll see the memo with this file, that we did go back out to all local contractors or contractors that bid on the RFP to see what their interest was in a short-term contract. So, and we had only TNR express interest, looking at their history with collections. They do, haven't had a lot of troubles with collections. There's troubles with their vehicles being leaking in town and whatnot. We're hoping that's minimized by the amount of liquid waste we're not going to collect anymore, as well as the new trucks being up to better standards. With that, we were able to negotiate with a contract extension with TNR that fits within our budget and the possibility of a second year, should we not have the full impact of Bill 151 implemented at that time. There is, the contract extension would be in a bylaw.
It'll come back as a bylaw? Okay, well, is there any, councillor Mino?
The suggestion to include the second extension, but it's not contributing to the process.
No. No, it's in, yeah, no, we don't have to tender to extend its contract for this. It's negotiated. Others were given the option as well to price, although nobody expressed interest, so we negotiate with our current contractor.
Councillor Kylie.
Yes, Mark, I agree. I think you've done your homework on this, and I think this is the most economical method, and service-wise, well, there was never really an issue with TNR as far as picking it up. There were some issues at the depot, which has been closed, so that solves that one. Just to clarify, could you advise council as to the approximate date of the other drop-off points, that there will be curbs, not curbside, but facilities where they can drop off recycling?
So, the, those units have been ordered. We expect the bins and the recycling mini-stations to be in, right now, they're saying mid-August, so once they're in, those ones will be the first to be distributed, I'll admit, community. And I'll bring a, a list of locations.
How many units are we talking?
I believe there were sixteen or eighteen units purchased to go within buildings and within the, around the community hub.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Roman.
Just a question. Now that the depot's been closed, like, I, I know the volumes are going to, we're expecting them really to increase when we bring in the cans, but is there any indication that the Blue Box volumes have increased now that the depot's been closed?
I don't have those numbers with me right now, but we've been selling a lot of Blue Boxes. So, people that are coming in and picking them up. We're looking at picking up, getting the ninety-five gallon containers available for purchase from residents as well, if they want, rather than just the small boxes. So, we'll have those, if they weren't ordered today, they were tomorrow. They're on, on the list.
Okay, yeah, the, so they're there for a year now. They'll be doing it for a year. Thanks for, for going through all those steps, pretty well what we asked you to do. The only thing I would ask is, is going forward, is if you could give us a little bit of a heads-up sometime that TNR had extended, that they were being extended.
Yeah, I do apologize for the...
Just so council will know and all know.
Miscommunication with that, with my fault, lots going on in short timeframes.
Yep, and thank you for that. Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, we have a reading of bylaws. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five one being a bylaw to authorize Mayor and Clerk to execute an agreement with DSAB for early learning program funding, September two sixteen to June two seventeen. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five two being a bylaw to authorize Mayor and Clerk to execute a contract with Alex McIntyre and Associates for clay capping, capping at the Kirkland Lake landfill site. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five three being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an extension agreement with Canadian Malartic for the supply of clay material for the Kirkland Lake landfill site. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five four being a bylaw to deem twenty-one and twenty-three Wishman Street as part of a register plan not to be registered. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five five being a bylaw to extend the contract with Tech Northern Roads for residential curbside recycling collection. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any notices of motion? Confirmation bylaw? It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that bylaw sixteen dash zero five six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Be read a first, second and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Councillors' reports. Councillor Mino.
At one point, when KPMG made their presentation of their report, I believe Pat and I sort of were in the agreement that we would need a public meeting perhaps to allow that, the residents to either express their interests or to offer suggestions, or actually just get more information as to the report contents. So, I was wondering if this would be a direction to staff, but to actually formalize the request with KPMG, Oscar, to start setting up a potential, what do you call that, open house or public forum requests? Because I don't think we've actually verbalized that or formally asked for that, Pat. So, I don't know if you would agree with me, but perhaps we could direct staff to initiate the process for that to happen?
Because the company made the offer, when Oscar was here, he made the offer to come, and if I remember, it was free of charge as well, so.
So, could, could staff take that as a direction, Nancy, and proceed?
We've already invited them to come to the next council meeting to, to do that, and Joanne's waiting for a response back. Actually, we asked them about this month, July as well, but we didn't have a response, and so she's resent the request again for, to have it next month.
Thank you.
Councillor Shami.
You want to do that during a meeting?
Uh, yes.
That might be two, three hours. So, we're going to do anything else after the meeting, or, like, that should be by itself, I think. It should be at one night at seven o'clock.
That's what it was. Well, in my initial understanding of it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was supposed to be a public forum or open house, town hall meeting, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was going to be at the Hockey Heritage.
Yeah, that's what I was, I would go with that. I don't think you should come here and talk about this.
No, no. That's not my...
As soon as he gets back to us with his times and dates, we'll, we can set that up.
Okay. The other, I had a couple, I had a couple things. The intersection at the mall where they put the new Johnny Tiger building now, you come out and you try to turn right, you can't because the lane's only one wide, so you have to wait for that, you know, final light. Next thing you know, there's cars backing up. I wonder if, Mark, it, would it be possible to explore maybe having a widening of the lane for a right-handed turn on red? Is that doable? Is it physically doable? Can you look into that?
We have to look at it a lot to check if the lane is secure. We have to look at, look into that.
Because if it was going to the right, it would be fairly simple. You would just, what, knock the curb down and maybe a little wider for a car to fit or a truck to fit?
Yeah, I would go a little bit over, and I could probably...
Yeah. Okay, can you, can you report back on that then? Thank you. Yeah, the other thing is obviously the Civic Park, that's going really well, and it's, it's taking good shape, and so, you know, it looks like we're going to have some use of that building this year, you know, maybe the ball field by the time it's done. But I'd just like to advise council, the REC committee will have to probably get together at one point fairly soon, because we're going to have to look at how we're going to actually allocate use of those facilities. I mean, there might be a rental process going on, it might be, you know, a delegation of some kind of responsibility towards operation, whatever. We haven't got anything set yet, but I just want to let council know that, though, that's something that's in the works in terms of how to manage the actual use of those facilities. So, we'll be working, I know Bonnie will set up a meeting shortly, but on behalf of the REC committee people, we're going to have to come back to council and suggest to you how we, we foresee that use of that facility, because we can't just leave it free for all, we have to actually have a structure there. So, that will be part of our discussions ongoing. Thank you.
Councillor Kylie.
Come to my attention, I've had a few complaints about the parking on Station Road on the side of where Central School is. It's, obviously, school is out, so that, that issue is not for the summer, but I know, Mark, you were there and talked to some of the business owners, because parents are parking their vehicles in front of their garage doors and making access difficult and making it dangerous for them to back out of their property. And one of the suggestions that one of the business owners had was to have parents pick up their children to go around from the, the library around the back and pick up their children there. I don't know who owns that property, but next to the laneway, there's an entrance next to the library. Is that town property? And it's a consideration would get, get away from the congestion on, on Station Road. Although, Mark, I know you were up there and, and did talk to some of the business owners, the problem with the parking and congestion there, it improved for about a week, and then it went back to almost the way it was. And the police enforcement has been very lenient. They don't want to be hassling parents picking up their kids, but it's, it's a dangerous, busy spot. So, I'm wondering if there, if there could be some consideration to whether we approach the school to make an area at the back of the school to pick up students by the parents. I don't know who owns that property. It's the old, where the rink was and whatnot, whether it would cost that much to open that up.
Yep, that's something...
Who owns, who owns the property, first of all?
That's something we could check into.
The library and the school board and the town owns the lane. But will we be marking on this? And I think Mark can give you an updated report.
Please. Thank you.
So, this has been an ongoing problem over time. A few years ago, we did meet with the school about it and did some preliminary engineering to show them how they could restructure their, the front of the school, to have the buses come in and drop off whatnot, and create a drop-off section for the, the parents. They had at one time created, had all the buses go to the back of the school and drop off, but because of their timeframes and volume of kids that they have to move in a certain period of time, they started coming back to the front again, and using the back as well. I did meet with them around the same time I met with the business owners, so at the school, we arranged a meeting with the principal, their infrastructure person at Timmins, or Subri, I believe, at Timmins, as well as the transportation, the bus transportation folk. So, we did a site visit with, with where they are. We brought the maps of actually what, what property they own, where the buses go in, identified certain areas that could be expanded and different configurations, as well as the front drop-off zone and moving staff parking to a, a different location at the back, so that they can accommodate this drop-off zone to get, the intention is to get people off the street and the buses in the proper location and the safety of everybody, pedestrians, public schoolchildren. So, we're in the process with them. It wasn't going to happen overnight. We're getting them our preliminary drawings to show what we're suggesting, and then they're, we'll take that to the school board and look and see what they can do with that. So, as far as the property to the back end, it is, we, I looked at that preliminarily. It is, the school board is there, it's part of their play area, extends out to the laneway. It is quite a ways walk for the children from there, if they drop off their school or the playground. If it's something that the school board would consider, it will be an option provided to them. But that would be at their construction cost for their entrance being on their property.
Okay, there is that roadway that's along, there is a roadway entrance there now, isn't there? There's two, the main entrance plus just before, if you were just going up there from here.
Your station room?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, the bus is typically go in the back and drop off, and then...
Are they actually using that?
They're using that as well as the front. They have so many kids to move from three-thirty to by three-forty-five to get out of the school onto buses, that they maintain their schedule, that they found that spot in the back too, not big enough to accommodate all the kids out within a short timeframe, so they moved some of them to the front. But because of the area that they actually have with, with some groundwork, they could expand that, that area to accommodate more buses at the back, as well as staff parking. And then when we talk about the front, it could be, they could repurpose that to the younger children, smaller buses, as well as parent drop-offs. So, that's what we're proposing to them. It's, it's their decision to make. We have painted the crosswalks all around there. We are looking at changes to the parking bylaw, regardless of that, within that area, so that congestion, again, that's an enforcement issue after the fact.
Okay, I'm glad to see that there is, it's in the works and being worked on as, as we speak then.
Yeah.
Because it is getting, it's, it's a busy spot. Okay, thank you.
And, Mark, you'll keep us up, up to speed on that as well?
Yeah, as soon as we, I have something to read on it, I'll, I'll put a report out to council.
Okay.
This past Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening ribbon-cutting ceremony for LaPage Best Choice Realty. Here, they've opened up a new location here in Kirkland Lake, and that's always a good thing to do when you see new businesses coming. And I should mention at the, after the presentation, we received a check from them for five hundred dollars for donation to the pool. So, that was two good things that happened.
It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council adjourns its regular meeting of July nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen to an in-camera meeting to discuss one confidential contract issue and one property issue. All in favor? Thank you.